All right, so we're live. So, welcome, everybody. My name is Tiffany Edwards. I'm the Director of Business Advocacy for the Eugene Area Chamber of Commerce. And I want to welcome everybody to our virtual candidate forum for the Lane County Board of Commissioners, Position Three. And I'll go ahead and I'll let the candidates each introduce themselves in a moment here. On the general, just general housekeeping items, the Eugene Chamber is not currently providing endorsements for any of the races in the primary elections. But we do strive to be a resource to our members and to those who are interested in learning more about the candidates and their values as they align with the business community. So these webinars are open to anyone. We do record them and we post them to our website, which is available to anybody who would like to look. The four candidates we have joining us today are all running in the same position, Position Three, Lane County Commissioner. They've each completed an initial questionnaire and have been invited to participate based on an alignment with the values with the business community. So our format tonight, first, we're going to have each candidate introduce themselves. And we're going to spend about two minutes on those introductions. And then I'm going to start by asking five questions, and they're the same questions for each of you. The candidates have been provided with those questions ahead of time. And we'll just go through those in different order, just to kind of make it equal. And then with additional time, we're going to open it up to questions from the audience. And I've already got a few that have come in. And so this is our third of four candidate forums that we're going to be doing. So hopefully, our website is a great resource for all of that information. So eugenechamber.com with that. So with that, I'll go ahead and we'll kick things off. Lori, I'll have you kick things off. And if you want to go ahead and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about why you are running.
Great, thank you so much, Tiffany. Good evening and hi to the other candidates. It's been a long time since we've seen each other. I really appreciate the Chamber not only hosting this so that we all have an opportunity to share a little more with your members, but also I want to appreciate all the work the Chamber's been doing in response to COVID-19. I've been following and watching some of your webinars and appreciate you putting out such good, factual, clear, helpful information to business owners in the community about the resources available to them. So thanks for your work in this really challenging and uncertain time. It's very much appreciated. My name is Lori Triger. I'm a candidate for the Lane County Board of Commissioners, District Three seat. And I am a firm believer in the power of ordinary people to do extraordinary things. I've been in this community for a little over 33 years now, raised two children here. And now I'm watching my grandsons grow up in this town that I love so much. And I'm running for their future. I'm concerned that they won't have available to them what we had when we first moved here in the eighties, which was the ability to find an affordable rental until we saved up enough to buy our home. We found meaningful work with living wages. And we always knew in the summer, the rivers would be clean enough to swim in. And there were abundant hiking trails and parks for us to enjoy year round. And I'm very much concerned that that is not their future if they want to put down roots and stay here in this community. In my 30-plus years here, I've worked a number of jobs, most relevant to this role, for more than 20 of those years in the nonprofit sector. I've worked on issues ranging from environmental work to basic human services to economic development. And I've also managed a number of policy campaigns, most notably the campaign to pass the paid sick time law in the city of Eugene, which of course is especially relevant and important now. I'm running with a public health equity framework, and that's been true for more than a year now. Nothing about that has changed, and in fact, it's more relevant than ever. I'm looking forward to bringing my real lived experience to this role. I know we'll have a lot of chance in answering questions to talk more about that later. And again, I'm very appreciative for the opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you so much, and that's all I have to say for now. Thanks again, Tiffany.
Okay, great, thank you. Next, we'll go to Matt, Matt Moore. I'll go ahead and unmute you so you can speak there. And Matt, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running for the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you so much, Tiffany, and thank you again for having me on. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk to everybody. So my name is Matt Moore. And like most of us here, you know, I was raised here in Eugene. And you know, my family moved here when I was only six years old. And Eugene raised me into the person that I am today. I experienced firsthand the problems that we face as a community. I graduated from South Eugene High School here in, you know, District Three. And from South Eugene, I went across the country to Philadelphia, to the University of Pennsylvania, where I majored in economics, management, and marketing. And you know, Penn is notorious for being the school that sends the highest percentage of its graduates to Wall Street, but I knew right away that that was not for me. I wanted to do something where I could have an impact. And I wanted to invest in the community that invested in me growing up. But you know, when I came back to Eugene, I was so frustrated to see the same issues facing our community that had been facing us for as long as I've lived here. And as a member of the community in Eugene, I knew I had to step up and lead and be a part of the solution. So that's why I decided to run for county commissioner, which is, you know, the role where I feel like can make the most meaningful impact on the issues that are the most important to me. And you know, I got into this race because I was tired of hearing the same rhetoric over and over again from our local politicians and not seeing the action needed to back it up. And that's what we need right now, because you know, the cost of inaction, whether it be homelessness, whether it be climate change, whether it be public health, the costs of inaction are just far too high. And I think that we could use someone on the commission who has an economics background, who can better understand the economic factors at play in our county. And we can use someone with a marketing background, because you know, so often, the methods in which our government bodies are soliciting public input are incredibly flawed. But this is just a form of market research, and I can use my expertise as someone who has a marketing background, who currently works as a marketing consultant, to help make sure that our government's action reflects what our community actually wants. So I'm here, I'm fighting for real progress, and that fight for real progress is never going to be easy. But when you see that your community is in desperate need of it, you do whatever is necessary. So I look forward to answering questions for you today. And afterwards, I hope that you'll join in that fight with me.
Great, thank you. All right, next, we're going to go to Joel. And let's see here. There we go. Okay. Joel, go ahead and why don't you introduce yourself and tell us why you're running for the Board of Commissioners?
Sure thing. Well, first of all, thank you so much, Tiffany, for having me today. And I hope all my other candidates and folks who are watching us live right now are staying safe at home. We're all doing our part to ensure that this pandemic has at least some impact as possible on our community. So first of all, I always start by saying that, you know, I'm very proud to be not only born but raised right here in Eugene. I know I was raised in the Jefferson and Whittaker neighborhoods by young, working-class immigrant parents. My folks first moved to Eugene to get their GED at the University of Oregon. And they worked hard to provide my family and myself with a better life than they had back in rural Sacagawea, Mexico. And my folks joined the long American tradition of coming to this country and such a better life. And it's something that has stuck with me, and I've always been driven to be involved in community. So whether it be, you know, volunteering at the Whittaker Thanksgiving Dinner as a young man, as a young boy to, you know, serving as student representative for Sheldon on the 4G school board, to being captain of the water pole on the swim team for my high school. And then, of course, you know, I was the first of my family to graduate from the University of Oregon. So I'm proud to say that, you know, I'm a duck, once a duck, always a duck. But I've sort of continued this path of being the first to do many things, you know. So since graduating college a little over six years ago, I've been appointed twice by city council, voted twice to the Human Rights Commission, and voted chair twice. I'm the youngest person to be appointed Chair of the Governor's Environmental Justice Task Force, advising our state on its most pressing environmental justice issues. And I've worked in a myriad of different things, anywhere from, you know, advising the governor on how to best reduce impacts to Oregonians on environmental health hazards, to, you know, working for Beyond Toxics for increased worker protections, to most recently, you know, my role has really been in immigrant rights, doing statewide coalition building, defending the nation's oldest sanctuary law, making Oregon the 14th state to allow people without legal status the ability to drive. But really, you know, for me, you know, addition to affordable housing and public safety, my aim really is to cultivate a regenerative green economy countywide with environmental and social benefits, not just for the folks who live here now, but for future generations. So really, I've really spent my life fighting for what's right. And as county commissioner, I'm hoping to bring the necessary energy needed to build a thriving future, not just for some people, but for everyone who calls Lane County their home.
Great, thank you, Joel. Well, last but not least, for introductions, we'll go to Sandra. Sandra, why don't you give us a little, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're running? And if you give me one moment here, for some reason, there you go, you're off mute. Okay, go for it.
I had to come off mute. So thank you, Tiffany, for putting this together. This is not easy, and it's time to navigate all of these crazy technologies and things. And I want to really thank the Chamber folks for putting this together. This is exactly what we need in the community to really get this race up to the level where people understand that though this is a quote "down-ballot" race, this is a very important position to be filled for our community. So when I look at why I'm running, I don't have some sort of a candid answer to that, but I'm running because I've always been involved with some sort of public service. And as a former EWEB commissioner, I looked at what was going to happen with Pete leaving the, Pete Norrison retiring and leaving the commission. And I realized I've got the perfect set of skills and experience and also the sort of sensibilities to be able to step into that position. I think most telling is the kind of large community benefit kind of projects that were brought to fruition when I was on the board for 10 years. And I'm talking specifically about things like extending the fiber optics into downtown. You know, EWEB could have just, we could have just put the fiber up the river for our dams to run generation projects, which is exactly what they were for. But I pushed hard and we're able to negotiate with the other four out of five members, you know, there are five members on the EWEB board, just like the Lane County Commission. But it was a very diverse board, so none of these things happened overnight or in just a couple of quick meetings, and then everyone in agreement. There was a lot of negotiation. So we got the fiber optics into downtown, which could be built on and built out. We built the first, EWEB, when I was on the board, built the first major wind generation project that was co-owned. It was precedent-setting and recognized nationally as being the first wind generation plant, large project in Wyoming that was co-owned by a public utility and a private utility. So it's that kind of innovation that I've been part of. Also, we put forward a nationally-recognized low-income assistance program. And by that, I mean that it was used as a model throughout the nation for low-income energy assistance. So all of these projects and things like that, I, for years, I worked in government relations, so I understand how to navigate the intricacies of regulation and law. And that's really boring, that's really policy wonky, but you have to understand how the system works to be able to be effective and get anything done. And I've lived here in Eugene, in the district, for my entire adult life. I came here, as a lot of people did, to attend the U of O and then decided that this was really where I wanted to make my home. And my husband and I, we lived for over 30 years near downtown. And so I have a really good experience of what it's like to live in the center of town. And now we're living up a little bit in the South Hills on Hilliard. And so I can see that end of the district. And for a year, I was not in the city, I was living up the McKenzie. And decided I was definitely not a country mouse and wanted to be back in the city. So I just really have an ethic of really doing public service. And this is where I can be of the most value in service at this time. So thank you.
Okay, great, thanks, Sandra. All right, so what we're going to do is I'm going to put a timer on. And as we go through, I'm going to give you each about two minutes to answer. I won't cut you off, but what I'll do is when we're at one minute, I'll just kind of hold up a one, so hopefully you can all see me. And then when we're down to 30 seconds, I'll just kind of do a three. And then when it's time up, I'll just kind of politely do this. So hopefully you kind of get the hint and then can wrap it up from there. So we'll start with Matt on this next question, and we'll kind of go through the same order, but we'll just alternate who goes first. So I'm going to ask the first question. So Matt, that you'll be on for this one. So Matt, tell us, what do you believe best qualifies you for the role of county commissioner in District Three?
Great, so yeah, there are a few things. Like I mentioned in my kind of introduction, I have a background in marketing and economics, which I think is something that this seat could really, really use, because we don't have somebody really at any level of our local government that has that right now. And we can use somebody who understands the economic factors that are at play in our county right now, especially right now when our local economy is shutting down due to this pandemic. And you know, make no mistake, it's a shutdown that needs to happen. But when we're coming back, we need somebody who understands the different factors that are at play. And I'm proud that I was talking, this is long before they were all forced to shut down. And also, like I mentioned earlier, I was raised here in Lane County. And I think it's really important that we have somebody who was raised here in Lane County and who understands the experiences of growing up here, of going to school here, of living in our neighborhoods, growing up on these streets and things like that. But I think the biggest thing is that, you know, my campaign is not shy about putting forth the new and bold ideas that we have needed here for a very, very long time and haven't gotten done. And I think that's the most important thing about myself, my candidacy and my campaign. And I think that's what really qualifies me, is my values, my principles, my beliefs, and my plans. You can go on our website, you can read our plans, you can see what it is that I believe in. And I think the fresh perspective that I'm bringing, you know, I haven't been in Eugene politics for a long time. And I think that's a really important thing, because right now, we don't need rhetoric, we need actions. And that's exactly what I'm going to bring to the table as county commissioner. I think that's the most important thing that any of us can bring right now, is a commitment to bringing real action and real progress to the table. And that's exactly what it is that I'm going to do.
Hey, great, thank you. All right, Joel, we'll go to you next. Same question, what believe, what do you believe qualifies you for the role?
So, you know, first of all, I am a really strong coalition builder. I've spent the last several years of my life really building really strong coalitions, right? So first of all, in 17, when Trump was first elected into office, we knew that there was going to be a massive amount of attacks on Oregon, Oregonians and on Oregon immigrants. So I built a coalition from about 40-ish organizations to over 100 to defend against anti-immigrant, anti-Muslim bills and ballot measures in the state of Oregon, which culminated in 2018. We defended Oregon's sanctuary laws, the oldest sanctuary law in the nation. We spent $3.5 billion and built a coalition of over 500 businesses, organizations, and individuals. You know, in this bipartisan environment, you know, I have, it's really important more now than ever that we have someone in this position that knows how to work with multiple constituencies. And I have experienced both at the city, county level, as well as the state in order to do so. In the city, you know, I helped champion and pass a resolution condemning white nationalism and white supremacy, and championed a resolution at the city and at the county extending our sanctuary status. And at the state capitol, right, we championed and led the coalition for driver's licenses for all, which extended wherever privileges to Oregonians without legal status, the ability to drive, making Oregon the 14th state. So whether it be in my role as Eugene Human Rights Commissioner, two-time Chair on my role as Chair of the Governor's Environmental Justice Task Force, where we are providing really critical support to the Fortune National Resource State agencies on what they should do to advance environmental justice in the state of Oregon. You know, I'm going to bring Lane County what it needs, which is broad coalition support and extremely bipartisan. And ever as we progress in time, we were seeing much more divisions in our politics, and we need to, we need someone who can bring folks together. And I think I'm the right person for that.
Right, that was perfect timing. All right, next, we will go to Sandra and let you answer that same question. What do you believe best qualifies you for the role?
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, great, okay, thanks. I think that the main thing that comes to mind, or the first thing that comes to mind is that I have, well, I have an unusual background in that I am the only candidate in this race that has proven policy-setting experience. And by that, I mean coming up with crafting public policy and also seeing it through to implementation. And I think we're in a very urgent time, and there's not time for us to really have this kind of training and acquire the experience. So I have had a lot of experience on the EWEB board and also working at the state level of seeing what it's like to, and what it takes to actually put together the policy and then also implement it. It's one thing to come up with a lot of good ideas and plans and task forces and things, but to get it really done. And then it's my collaborative style and networking and the trust that I have. I have worked in various positions in the community. I've had every imaginable, you know, hourly wage job in the community. I've worked in natural health food stores. I've just had a lot of experience in things, worked with the first people putting together the agricultural sector before there was the whole organic certification. So helped start the growers' market, one of the original food-buying co-ops. And so my depth in the community goes way back. And so I think that's what really qualifies me, is the depth and breadth of experience that I've had and just the networking and the people who trust me. I'm running because people have encouraged me to do so. And I also have, all this is coupled with training in a contemplative tradition that gives me the ability to really keep an even keel during times of turmoil.
Great, thank you. Okay, Lori, your turn, what believe, what do you believe best qualifies you for the role?
Yeah, great. Well, there's a number of things. I'll elaborate a little bit on my opening statement about why I'm running. I mentioned we first came here in the eighties. And what I didn't mention was at that time, we were a young family, really struggling. And the WIC program, which is a county nutrition supplement program for moms and young kids, really helped us make ends meet. So I've been a service recipient of a very vital county service. The county is fundamentally a service provider. Of course, all of us have used county services, many of us just don't even realize it, right? We've driven on any one number of the 1,400 miles of roads. The county maintains, we've played in county parks. We benefit from public safety programs. We have 30,000 people who get their primary health care through the county's health department. The county inspects restaurants and spas and public pools. So we're all benefiting from county services, and that is the county's job to be a service provider. I've been a recipient of services. I've also been that service provider in my 20-plus-year career in nonprofits, working with many organizations that receive county funding to deliver those services. I've also been in executive leadership, managing a public health nonprofit entity, which means I've been responsible for the development, management, and oversight of budgets. Additionally, I've served a term on the Lane County Budget Committee, as well as the county's Equity and Access Advisory Board. I have the experience of developing, advocating for, and analyzing public policy. I understand and embrace the role of a county commissioner. I've had my eye on this seat for many, many years, because, as I mentioned, I ran a public health nonprofit. And it was then that I came to understand the critical role of our county commissioners as our public health authority, as well as our housing authority. It's an executive leadership role that I embrace, that I'm well-prepared for, and I'm absolutely qualified for.
Wonderful. All right, thank you. So we'll go to our next question. And for this one, we'll go ahead and we'll have Joel start us off to answer. So Joel, I'll go ahead and unmute you now. So question, what do you believe is the biggest challenge facing specifically Eugene? And how as a member of the Board of Commissioners, would you propose to address it?
Sure thing. So if you would have asked me a few weeks ago, I'd have told you a different answer. But we're not in a few weeks ago, we're in right now. And right now, COVID-19, this pandemic, is the issue of our lifetime, at least of my lifetime it has, it's been. And it's has had a worldwide impact. Currently, my deep concern is ensuring that we recover from this not only financially, but also that our most vulnerable members of society are protected. And in that case, you know, I think for us right now, the most critical things that I've been hearing in my role as Coalition Manager of my organization across the state, as I've had conversations with folks across the state, but also with folks here in Eugene and Lane County, have been very basic things. People being able to pay rent, people being able to buy food, people being able to keep their water and electricity on. And then, of course, long-term, right, what are the economic impacts this is going to have on our community members? And one of the biggest things that concerns me right now is that if you are, do not have legal status, the United States of America, you do not qualify for any of the tax exemption, any of the stimulus checks that are, that a lot of folks got today. Currently, there are 74,000 workers who are undocumented in the state of Oregon that do not qualify for unemployment insurance. Out of those 74,000, my estimation is around 7,200 workers in Lane County could potentially go without a paycheck. So while there is federal stimulus money coming in, you know, my deep concern is, are these workers who don't have legal status, who pay into our tax system, being compensated and being protected if they lose their job? And what is a long-term economic impact for these folks? And really, the fact of the matter is that black and brown folks in Oregon and in the United States are getting COVID at a higher rate than other folks of different ethnicities. So there's a multitude of factors affecting these vulnerable community members, as well as folks with disabilities. So really, my deep concern is, you know, are people who are most vulnerable being protected right now and in the years and months to come, what's our responsibility as the county to make sure that these folks are protected?
Great, thank you. All right, we'll go to Sandra to answer this question next. Now I'll go ahead and unmute you there. So Sandra, what do you believe is the biggest challenge facing specifically Eugene? And how, as a member of the Board of Commissioners, would you address it?
Well, of course, it's the water we're swimming in right now, that the biggest thing that we're all dealing with is a pandemic. I mean, it's almost, it's almost impossible to even conceive that we're actually dealing with a world pandemic here locally, but we are. And I think the thing that's going to really make a difference is how we put the economy back together after things start easing up from the COVID-19 crisis that we're in, and how do we rebuild that local economy? And I think that it's an opportunity, things will never be the same again. And I think it's an opportunity to look at the conditions and not just go back to business as usual after the quarantine is lifted, but really to look at what's the opportunity for us to bring very diverse groups of people together? Climate activists, bankers, and moreover, it's a time to really look at how does inclusion work or dysfunction of inclusion in our local area? So we're going to have to find a way to bring people together and to actually measure and have accountability and to measure what we're doing for meaningful participation in that economy as we're rebuilding it. I mean, I've got some specific ideas about how to do that, but it's really about working cooperatively with other leaders out in the community, other citizens, and making sure that it is an inclusive rebuilding program, that it's not just going back to models that we've used in the past. So it's a terrible time that we're going through, but it's also an opportunity to look at how do we come out of it? What do we want to build so that we have a truly inclusive community? And that means putting metrics in that we can actually measure. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Lori, your turn. What do you believe is our biggest challenge here in Eugene? And how, as a Board of Commissioner, would you propose to address it?
Yeah, well, I think, you know, as is apparent that we're talking about COVID-19, but I take a slightly different look at it. I don't see this pandemic necessarily the biggest challenge. I see it as the biggest manifestation of a challenge that we've been facing all along. It's really revealing the cracks in our system. And I mean that from a public health perspective, our disaster preparedness, the funding and resources that we have available to us as a local public health department, the kind of bumpers, if you will, that our local businesses might have, the kind of cushion the average family does or doesn't have to weather an unanticipated economic disaster. So again, I've been running for more than a year talking about public health equity, because that is the biggest challenge for our communities. And this pandemic is only dramatically exposing And this pandemic is only dramatically exposing exactly the breadth and depth of this challenge. I think as we move forward, we are going to have great opportunity and great struggles to rebuild and restore our communities in a way that embraces equity and inclusion. And what I mean by that is when you talk about a public health equity framework, it requires that we look at the most marginalized, least resourced individuals, populations, geographies, and you make solutions that work for those most marginalized. And that catches everyone up in the solutions as we work toward the center. If our decision-making and our problem solving starts at or near the center, we will continue to lose people behind. And we're going to see more and more people in our communities facing issues of economic devastation and fundamental issues like not having enough food on the table, who have never experienced such a thing before. And so I'm deeply committed still and always and again to this public health equity approach that I will bring to the county. It's needed now more than ever.
Great, thanks Lori. We'll go to Matt. Matt, same question. Biggest challenge in Eugene and how would you propose to address it?
Yeah, so obviously, the biggest challenge right now that we're facing is COVID nineteen. And you know, it's personal. I just found out two days ago that one of my close friends was tested positive for it. And so, you know, it's, it's scary and we all should be scared. And I agree with what Lori said. This is, it exposes the cracks in our current system. And I want to talk about something a little bit tangential to that and related to what Lori just talked about, and that's homelessness, because you know, we need to talk about the goal of ending chronic homelessness in our county. This is something that has been very much shown by this pandemic to be incredibly problematic and very much exposed because of our high at-risk population here in Lane County. It affects every aspect of life here in the county and we can't tackle all of the other necessary problems here without making sure that everyone has a place to lay their head at night. You know, I think this, this current health crisis just exacerbates and it highlights all of these pre-existing issues, homelessness being the biggest one. And we have an obligation to ensure that everyone in our community has a home, a place to call home. And no one should ever have to where they're going to sleep. And the current plans to assist the unhoused population are really just a Band-Aid solution. And ultimately, they have been ineffective. We have a fifty percent increase in our homeless population over the last three years. We're spending millions and millions of dollars of this just at a local level. And we're not solving the problem. So we can't just keep throwing money at solutions that have been proven not to work. Same failed policies over and over again. So that's why a central focus of my campaign is a commitment to the goal of ending chronic homelessness in Lane County through housing-first solutions that have been proven to work in places like Houston and Salt Lake City, where they've seen fifty and seventy percent reductions in homelessness through permanent supportive housing, providing stable solutions to those who are struggling with homelessness and keeping us focused on truly alleviating this problem and breaking the cycle. It's the most effective way to solve the problem. Ninety-six percent of people who enter into permanent supportive housing remain stably housed and it's by far the most cost-effective. The federal government estimates that a chronically homeless person costs taxpayers forty thousand dollars a year, but permanent supportive housing only costs twenty thousand dollars a year. This is some, this is one of those pre-existing issues that we have in our society that we can fix and we can make sure that we don't have things like this exposed again in the future if something like COVID nineteen ever comes back.
Great, thank you, Matt. For this next question, we'll go ahead and we're going to start with Sandra and question will go around. The question is, how might you differentiate or prioritize a countywide decision versus decisions that are specific to just individual interests or interests of just District Three? Go ahead.
Okay, I was still muted, sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry, that was my fault.
This is an interesting question, because when I first saw it, I thought, how could there be a differentiation? So the Lane County is very large, as, as we all know, it extends from the crest of the Cascades to the Pacific Ocean. And it's as diverse as the state of Oregon itself, where I was talking about, you know, rural and urban and all that. But I think any decision that a commissioner makes on the, on the Lane County Board, it needs to be considered in the context of the county as a whole. So if you really look at it, the points of view are not that vastly different. They're not that much different at all. And all of the, all of the residents, anyone who's living in Lane County, they're concerned about, there's three main human concerns that, that we all have. That's safety, that's health, it's having a job to support their families. So I think that most decisions, there's not going to be any differentiation between something that would be good for the county and good for Eugene. There may be some, you know, smaller issues that are, seem to be urban only, but the, I guess, I'm wondering what an example would be of a purely urban issue. So I, I have the advantage of having grown up in central Oregon and, you know, having spent time and continued to spend time in areas all over the county. So I just feel like that I have to be honest and say that when I'm on the board as a decision maker, I will keep the larger view during all the discussions, but when it comes time for an actual vote, I will be voting on behalf of the constituents who have elected me. So you know, that's, that's just a perspective that, that a, an elected leader has to keep. So I'll be looking for differentiation, but I don't see it right now. So thank you.
Yes, no problem. Thanks Sandra. Lori, I'll go to you. Same question. How might you differentiate or prioritize countywide decisions versus decisions that are just specific to District Three?
So differentiating and prioritizing slightly different, different things. And, and of course, I don't get to make decisions on behalf of a district. Voting as part of a five-member voting body is, is a vote. One thing I would say is I would rely on some of the relationships that I have with current commissioners through my service on the Budget Committee, as well as other leaders in the community who don't necessarily live in or don't serve this district. Throughout my twenty-plus years in nonprofits, I've worked primarily for Lane County-based organizations, but also a number of statewide and even regional initiatives. And so I would use information and feedback across the, the county to inform my decision-making. I, I would also say that we as humans, there's, there's research about this. We are far more alike than we are different and we do share common goals around our own personal health and wellness and concerns for our family and our jobs. And so I think what's different is the approach and the resources that are available to other parts of the county that are unique and different from District Three. Two examples that come to mind, one is public safety. District Three is almost entirely within the city of Eugene, city limits, not, not completely, but almost entirely. And so our public safety needs are met primarily and predominantly by the Eugene Police Department as opposed to the Sheriff's Department. And I would take that very seriously and understand that the rest of the county has a very different experience with public safety, particularly the rural areas. And I would use my own experience, having lived in a rural community. Before I moved to Eugene, I lived in a small coastal town. And another example of having different resource and access is when we were first on the WIC program, we lived in this tiny rural community. I had the same eligibility for that program, but I did not have the same access to it as someone who, for instance, was living in Eugene. I lived sixty miles from the WIC office. And so that extra layer of challenge of transportation and scheduling was really critical to me being able to use that county service. So I would bring that lived experience to my decision-making, my relationships and, and my willingness to look outside my own district for input before I made any decision.
Great, thanks Lori. Next, we'll go to Matt. Matt, same question. How would you differentiate or prioritize countywide decisions versus decisions that are specific to District Three?
Yeah, so I'm obviously elected by the constituents of District Three, but I represent, I'm one vote on a board that represents all of Lane County. And I take that responsibility very, very seriously, because it's an incredibly large county and it's an incredibly diverse county. And I'm very glad that, you know, Lori brought up public safety, because you know, the Sheriff's Department is something that is incredibly important to a lot of people here in Lane County, but a lot of people in, you know, our district don't see that as much. I've lived in South Eugene for the majority of my life. And you know, I didn't have a lot of interactions with the Sheriff's Department. All of my interactions were with EPD. But you know, I've made sure to educate myself throughout this campaign, sitting down with the sheriff touring the county jail, going on a ride-along with one of the sheriff's deputies and seeing just how much ground they have to cover. And I think a lot of people in Eugene don't know that we only have two sheriff's deputies at a time patrolling the entire area of Lane County. Whereas, you know, we here in Eugene are spoiled. We have many, many more than that, patrolling just our district here in South Eugene. And so I think that as county commissioner, it's my duty to make sure that we look outside of just our district when making decisions, because you know, I have my value system, my belief system, and that will never, ever waver. But collaboration is also incredibly important. And that works in all areas, whether it be collaborating with people who have different belief systems and value systems than I do, political ideals than I do, or people who just are from different areas and different places that I am. So you know, I will be a very collaborative county commissioner and I'll make sure that I'm working from all different areas, all the commission, all different districts and making sure that I'm listening to whatever they have to say. I know, I make sure I value different opinions, because that's how you get things done. You know, when I was at Penn and I was fighting against discriminatory housing policies towards low-income students, I had to work with, you know, this guy named Brian Schmidt. And I always remember him, because he was, you know, a little bit crazy and we didn't really agree on anything, but he was able to bring a lot to the table. I was able to bring a lot to the table. And together, we were able to push our agenda forward and get things done. And get a lot of really great things done together, even though we didn't agree. And I think it's that kind of an attitude that we need in a county commissioner, someone who's collaborative and willing to work with other people.
Great, thanks Matt. And last, we will go to Joel. There you go. I've unmuted you. So how would you, Joel, differentiate or prioritize countywide decisions versus decisions that are specific to individual interests or just those in District Three?
One of the things I really pride myself on is, you know, I mentioned earlier, is being a coalition builder. And I've been doing the work of a coalition builder for many, many years. I really pride myself in my ability to take diverse perspectives and people from different backgrounds, not just an opinion, but right in, in age and racial, racial background and, and opinions. And through my work, whether it be in environmental justice or immigrant rights or human rights or reproductive justice work that I've done, it's all, it's all been to get people to, into moving one direction. And you know, the, the fact of the matter is, is other, my fellow candidates mentioned, we serve on a board with four other commissioners. But I'll tell you, I would, the coalitions that I, that I run and serve on have dozens, if not, you know, one of my coalitions has over a hundred organizations. And, and when you have that many people, it's like courting cats, right? The great thing about the commission that I really love and appreciate is because there are five commissioners, I think we'll be able to get to a place in which we, we come to agreement much quicker. And you know, you're not, you don't live in a place this long, right? Like I said, I was born and raised right here, but I have family in Springfield, I have family in Junction City, I have family all across the county, over sixty family members. And those people, their lived experience, my family, which I'm in touch with on a regular basis, helping inform me, not just for vision of what's happening in District Three, but for a vision of what's happening all across the county. So yeah, you know, with my, my strong relationship building and also, you know, my ability to, to get consensus on a large swath of different opinions and ideas, I think is critical to ensuring that we make decisions that are, that are helpful and beneficial to folks in District Three, but are beneficial to everyone who lives in Lane County, who calls this great county their home.
Great. Thank you. All right. We've got two more questions. You guys are doing great. I really appreciate it. Lori, I'll have you start for this next question. Ensuring a healthy economy is important for long-term sustainability. It keeps people employed and that supports the tax base that we rely on to deliver so many of the services in Lane County. I'd love to hear your opinion on the best way we can promote economic development. What role does the Board of Commissioners play in that?
Yeah, great. And very important question. So I would draw on my experience, a number of different things. One is my time working at NEDCO, the Neighborhood Economic Development Corporation, which is now called Dev Northwest. And one of the programs in the department that I managed was the Main Street Alliance Program, which was specifically geared toward recruiting, supporting and promoting small locally-owned businesses. So I think there's a lot of opportunity in terms of the county's economic development programs, the partnership with Lane Workforce Partnership, obviously the Chamber, organizations like Main Street Alliance to bring folks together to create a roadmap for success for local businesses. The, I know the current board in the wake of the COVID nineteen crisis has been doing a lot of really important rapid response work, particularly, for example, at last week's meeting, retooling some of the funding for Lane Workforce Partnership for layoff aversion and diversion programs. Our Austin Ramirez, our county economic development specialist, has a lot of really great innovative ideas and important backgrounds. So I'd be looking to our professional staff for a lot of, a lot of ideas for best practice and where to go next. I know the current board is also looking carefully at the CARES Act and the next congressional aid packet to make sure that we include mental health services, because we need mentally healthy folks who are owning businesses as well as shopping businesses in our communities. And this next aid packet will be specifically aimed at communities of fewer than five hundred thousand. So we should be seeing a little more relief and opportunity locally. I want a business climate that's good for people, that's good for the planet. Business owners are also workers. So I have a long and proven history of standing up for workers. And in my opinion, standing up for workers is also standing up for business. They are one in the same. And I think the county has tremendous number of opportunity to support particularly our small locally-owned businesses.
Great, thanks Lori. We'll go to Matt for this next question. Ensuring a healthy economy, very important. Keeps folks employed and it supports the tax base. So get, tell us your opinion about how the, your role with the Board of Commissioners can help support and promote economic development?
Yeah, it's critically important. I mean, it's one of the most important issues that we're going to be facing. And you know, I'm proud that our campaign was putting such a huge emphasis on small businesses before so many of them were forced to close, but now we're going to see it be even more important as we deal with, you know, as we take office, it's not going to be the hospitalizations that we're dealing with from COVID nineteen. Hopefully, as we all take social distancing seriously, it's going to be the economic fallout. And what worries me so much is that for too long, our local government has just been content to say the right things when it comes to our economy without actually taking the action necessary to move it forward. Because, you know, when I go around and I made a point during this campaign to talk to local businesses and ask them what our local government's doing to support them. And most commonly, the answer I get is nothing or eh, not very much, things like that. And you know, it's time that the county really steps up to encourage sustainable and economic development with local small businesses. And it's time that we not do that, you know, not through our words, but through our actions. And we can't expect the same methods that have been ineffective in the past to work in the future, because by every metric, Lane County's economy and Oregon's economy, Eugene's economy are below the national average, below the national median. So we know that we need to start bringing new approaches to this issue. Simply talking about revitalizing our business community is not going to get it done. We got to focus on supporting the local, small, sustainable businesses that make Lane County so special. That's why I developed my proposal for creating local economic opportunities, which you can find on my website, mattmore2020.com. I encourage everyone watching to give that a read. To failure, we can help our local small businesses flourish. We can create a vibrant local economy and strong living wage jobs for everyone in the community. I envision a lane county where we aren't relying on large out-of-state corporations. Their interests do not match ours here in Lane County. They are just here until they can get a bigger tax break in some other county in Idaho, and then they're going to move there. And we can't rely on them to provide the sustainable economic development that we need. We got to focus on people and workers and our local businesses over corporate profit.
Okay, great, thanks Matt. We'll go to Joel next. Joel, same question. You need me to repeat it? Just basically, what, what do you believe the role of the Board of Commissioners is in promoting economic development?
Sure thing. So as, you know, other commissioners have mentioned, as we all know, right? People need living wage jobs in order to make sure their families have the opportunity at what all of us are looking for, which is a chance at the American dream, right? A chance for the pursuit of, of of happiness, pursuit of liberty, pursuit of opportunity in which this, this great country is founded on. And so for me, right, I'm really looking at a couple of things. One, of course, is we need to quit letting big corporations skate off tax breaks and provide those breaks to our locally-owned, small and medium-sized businesses. We need to create a system in which it creates a business environment in which it's a little more equitable, right? Some of the things that really concerned me in the past, of course, was the capstone project in downtown Eugene when it was built. It was that we provided a number of tax breaks and received very little in return. My, my own father, when I My, my own father, when I was in sixth grade, was laid off of Sony disc manufacturing after they, their property tax exemption sort of dried up and they said, you know what, this isn't the place for us anymore. So really, you know, for me, I have a two-term approach. One is a plan to, to attack climate change. So we need to ensure that corporations and, and that are currently polluting our environment are held accountable. And we need to divert that funding to, to fund energy efficiency, renewable energy, job training programs that are fully focused on low-income families and communities of color across our county. You know, this model would transform our economy, would protect and restore our environment. They create family wage jobs for, for undeserved people while also holding corporations accountable to paying their fair share. And they, there are emerging businesses, you know, that, that Eugene itself and, and Lane County have been champions of, you know, thinking corporations like Akremoto, right? Sort of these different business enterprises that are leading the way to, as we, as we sort of go further into, into this, this new decade.
Perfect timing. Great. Thanks, Joel. Sandra, what are your thoughts? I'll go ahead and unmute you there. So what do you believe the role of the Board of Commissioners is in promoting economic development?
Well, I would start by hiring the, the last three people that talked. No, seriously, the, the county commission is at the center. We are, we are, as Matt mentioned, we're going to be at the center of basically recreating our economy after this pandemic starts to ease up. And for me, the most important thing is to involve all the citizens and the divergent groups. I mean, we're going to have to make the environmental groups, the climate crisis activists, all these people need to be involved in reinventing the way we do economic quote development. And the first thing you do is you start by agreeing on what is the definition of economic development. And what has to happen is that we have to find a way to work collaboratively across this community to close or to narrow the inequality gap. And we have to get underneath all these problems. We have to stop dealing with only symptoms and get to the real issues, which are that so many of our small businesses and so many of our citizens are in asset poverty. And we have to address some of those basic economic concerns before we can continue to talk in these platitudes and jargon about all these development plans that we have. We really need to look at the folks who are the most disadvantaged, who are, who are underrepresented traditionally and bring them in and find a way for individuals, as well as small business, as well as the county, to build on assets. Thank you.
Thanks, Sandra. So my last question. Matt, we'll start with you for this question and go around. We have a very diverse community, very diverse county, with values that are often in opposition, and it makes it very difficult for policymakers to act. I would love to hear your definition of how you define bold leadership.
Yeah, so, sorry. Leadership is about making sure that you listen to all of your constituents and you follow the facts. And you know, as I believe I've mentioned before, I'm going to be a very open-minded commissioner. I'm going to make sure that I listen to everybody who's giving me opinions. But you know, at the end of the day, I'm going to trust my own judgment that the voters of District Three elect. I'm going to trust my own value system and I'm going to follow the facts. I'm going to follow the evidence and I'm going to trust the numbers. Because that's how you get things done. And you know, as my, as a leader, it's my responsibility to bring a strong vision, to bring proper judgment and to always, you know, be open-minded, ensure that everyone feels valued, everyone feels heard, and everyone feels respected in our community. You know, that, all that being said, though, a good leader also understands that it's not their duty to make everybody happy. And sometimes bringing real progress means making an unpopular decision. And I'm ready for that as county commissioner. I understand that that's a very important part of my job. And as county commissioner, I'm prepared to do what is right, even if it might be in an unpopular decision at the time. Because I'm going to make sure that I prioritize our community's long-term health, no matter what that takes. You know, I think of the greatest leader that I've ever met in my life, and his name was, his name was Sam. He was a former Army Ranger, actually. He had his arm shut off in Afghanistan. And to this day, he still does Iron Man triathlons. He's a fantastic movie. And then I got to talk to him for a while and he, he talked to me about the difference between hard and challenging. And how a good leader needs to be able to endure what's hard and grow from what is challenging. And I've taken that lesson with me throughout my entire life. And that's something that I always think of every time that I grow from it and I grow from it and I learn from it. And that's something that I'll continue to do as county commissioner, to make sure I grow from every experience that I have and make sure that on the job, I'm constantly improving and always bringing every single thing that I can, every single thing that I learned to the job, every single day when I walk into that office, so that I can make sure that my judgment, my values are always as strong as they can possibly be.
Great. Thanks, Matt. We'll go to Joel next. There we go. Joel. As, as I'm sure you know, we've got a very, very diverse community here in Lane County. Makes it very difficult for policymakers to act often. So how would you define bold leadership?
Sure thing. So you know, first of all, I think diversity is one of America's greatest strengths. It's what defines us as a nation. It's what we continue to benefit from as we compare ourselves to the rest of the world. To answer your question around bold leadership, I feel like it's something that, you know, you, you show, you don't talk about. And something that I've been doing since I was, you know, a little kid. And you know, most recent, most recent examples of, of bold leadership that, that I can talk about, that have specifically impacted Lane County, people of Lane County. Around this time last year in February, I learned that our local sheriff was working with Immigrations and Customs Enforcement against Oregon's thirty-three-year-old sanctuary law, which we had just spent three and a half million dollars defending. And so I did what old leaders do. I acted. I came together, I brought together a coalition of two dozen organizations and individuals across the county. We wrote a letter to our sheriff asking him to stop. He did not. And we escalated. We went to the Board of Commissioners and testified. We wrote letters to the editor. We wrote op-eds. You know, and because of my deep experience and deep relationships in this community, I was able to get over fifty students from the University of Oregon to come out and protest outside of the sheriff's office for the unconstitutional actions he was taking. And two weeks later, he resigned from office. The bold leadership is shown. It's not something you talk about.
Okay, great. Thank you. Let's see. Sandra, we'll go to you next. Same question. How would you define bold leadership?
Thank you. I would define bold leadership as a leader who is fearless and taking action, but not reckless, fearless without being reckless. A leader who's willing to stand on principle without making someone else wrong. There is too much highly politicized them and us politics, and that just has to be left in the past. A bold leader is one who embodies the integrity and honesty of the working-class families and individuals that really make up most of the residents of our county and of which I, all my life have been really standing up to, to speak for people who do not always have the entree into even local government to, to really have someone speaking for them. I define bold leadership as a leader who's willing to engage in civil discourse with those who may hold diametrically opposed views. And at the same time, that leader maintains their own sensibilities. I am that kind of leader. I saw that play out time and time again in my legislative work and at EWEB. I have a healthy sense of self-worth without having the ego-driven ambitions of a traditional politician. I am not a leader to be a politician. I'm a leader to serve the community. And I think that the, a bold leader has to keep the best and does keep the best interest of the community as a whole in mind and is willing to make tough decisions that may not please everyone, but decisions that are for the betterment of the whole area, the whole county, not the best immediate outcome for any particular special interest group. And then just to, to really complete this, this line of thinking, a bold leader is one who leads with the cooperation and support and trust of the citizens and those around them. A bold leader comes from the point of service, not privilege.
Great. Thank you. So sorry, last answer to this question. We'll go with Lori. Lori, if you could tell us how you would define bold leadership?
Sure. I, I both really love this question and really dislike this question. And I'm going to go with the dislike first, which is because I think too often we talk about bold leadership, particularly when we're talking about women leaders, when really what we're doing is taking up the space that we are due. And we have good ideas and we're not afraid to say them, and that that's often perceived as being pushy or bossy or something that otherwise if the ideas were floated with the kind of energy and enthusiasm that a woman leader brings is often seen as bold and it's often used as a term to couch a critic, a critique for someone for not staying in their lane. I do not believe that's how you intended it, but I, I feel I had to say that that's for me sometimes how I hear that word. So to answer the question, and the part of it that I love about bold leadership is, to me, bold leadership is values-based, it's mission-driven, and it's about being innovative. And I think that's going to be especially important as we get to the other side of the public health crisis of COVID-19. We're going to have to innovate. We're going to have to be generative. We're going to have to look at ways to be restorative around all sorts of things, but particularly around our economy. If we get mired in the notion that what we're trying to do is get back to where we were, I don't think we'll succeed. And I also think we'll miss a lot of really important opportunities. People, as you well know, at the Chamber are adapting and retooling their business models very quickly. And I think of it like during wartime, and this is the only time I'll ever use a war reference because I find it distasteful. But in the medical, in the field medical hospitals in wartime, surgical techniques are often developed and innovative, be innovated because of the incredible pressures of the circumstance. And so I think there's going to be a lot around business modeling in particular that we're learning under this tremendous stress and pressure and time of scarcity, that when we get back to a place that we don't have to be scarcity-driven and we have the time and attention, we can take those learnings and apply them. And I think that is bold leadership, is to do that, is to foster that, is to support that and encourage that. And so I think we can do a lot of heavy lifting. I also don't think bold has to equal big or difficult. It can just mean innovation, values-driven and mission, mission-based. And that's, that's the kind of leader I have been for decades and will continue to be on the county commission.
Well, great. Well, with that, that was the end of our prepared questions. So I'll go ahead and go, I'm going to switch over to some questions from the audience. We have one that came from panelists here, and then I have a few others that were submitted earlier today. So someone who's joining us on Zoom has asked, the Lane County Board of Commissioners also act as the Board of Health. What experience do you have, each of you, in public health policy? And so for this first one, I'll go ahead and we'll start with Joel, and I'll let you go ahead and answer that question. There you go. Go ahead, Joel.
So in terms of public health, you know, I have a couple of things in which I've, I've been involved in. One is, you know, I, I was involved in the passing of a bill that extended healthcare to children without legal status. And I worked on that bill very hard along with our, with partners at the Oregon National Health Coalition. But really, you know, my, my mom worked for Central Tino Mary Connell for a long time as a, as a medical interpreter for, for families who didn't have access to healthcare. And so it's something that's very near and dear to my heart. It's also, right, I've also was a part of what's called the Disability Justice Framework. You know, currently, one in four Argonians have a disability. But people with disabilities are really rarely considered as a, as a voting block or even a community. And so really, when you take a sort of a look at people with, with disabilities, which is one in four Argonians, and then you take a look at, you know, of people of color in the state of Oregon, there are disproportionate health impacts on, on people who are people with disabilities, who are people of color. And the majority of work I've done is environmental justice, right? And environmental justice is the belief that communities should have, should not have to disproportionately bear the impact of environmental health hazards, but they do. And with that comes asthma. With that comes reproductive health issues, with that comes issues related to asthma. And so there's a number of, of, of public health concerns that aren't traditionally seen as public health concerns. And that's something that I would like to bring to the county commission is to shine a light on a number of, of health, public health issues that currently aren't seen as public health issues or haven't been looked at as closely.
Great. Okay, Sandra, I'm going to go to you. What experience do you have in public health policy?
Thank you. I have public health policy experience both at the county level and also at the state level. One of my clients was a private ambulance service that was the first private ambulance provider to come into Eugene Springfield area. And I helped to navigate them through the intricacies of the county government and city government. And the result was a private-public contract for the provision of non-emergency ambulance transport in the city. And what that did is free up the Eugene and Springfield ambulances, freed up the firefighters slash paramedics to respond to nine-one-one calls rather than responding to drive a medically fragile person across the parking lot at Peace Health or something. But no joking aside, I spent about eighteen months going through a change, changing, closing some loopholes in the county codes that have to do with provision of ambulance services. Then at the state level, I, one of my last clients that I represented there was an organization called Healthy Children, and the issue was lactation consultants, the women that provide the services when a mother and baby are having trouble with breastfeeding. So I also represented Lenscrafters for a very long time at the, at the legislature, at the state level. And it was a lot about the provision of services and, and what it takes to get actual services to the people that need them. So I was instrumental in changing the laws so that a local provider would be able to take a piece of gravel out of a football player's eye if they got gravel in their eye at a, at a high school track meet or something. And yet, you know, according to state laws, that was forbidden because of scope of practice. So I do know a lot about the provision of services. And I have to say, it's an area in Lane County that, Lane County is, has outstanding health clinics. And people don't realize all the, the various levels of services. So we really need to find ways to support those services and put more money into those budgets.
Great. Okay, thanks, Sandra. Lori, we'll go to you. Lori, what experience do you have in public health policy?
Yeah. Well, two minutes is not going to be enough to cover it. But what I would say first of all is that public health policy is public policy. All public policy is public health policy because there is a health impact to every decision made at every level of government. So economic policy is public health policy, land use planning is public health policy, transportation planning is public health policy. My experience with public health policy is far-ranging and spans over two decades. From my seven years at Food for Lane County, working with anti-hunger advocates regionally, to streamline food stamp applications, to provide crop cleaning tax credits for farmers who donate to food banks, to my work currently at my organization that I work at now, at Sponsors, helping folks with criminal conviction histories reintegrate into the community successfully. We're particularly concerned We're particularly concerned about the impacts of COVID-19 on incarcerated people, and there's a lot of public health policy to be, to be made to address the abhorrent conditions in our prisons and jails. The five years I spent as the Executive Director of the Lane Coalition for Health, Healthy Active Youth, which was a public health nonprofit, working on child obesity prevention through public policy. We changed policy around school wellness. We passed state policy requiring minimum mandates for physical activity in schools. We worked with city planners to improve parks and bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. I was also part of the Oregon Health Improvement Plan Committee when the OHA created the first ever statewide health improvement plan. So a range, a breadth, a depth of policy experience, the paid sick time policy, the paid family and medical leave policy, increasing the minimum wage, passing a retirement security program and a domestic worker bill of rights. These are all public health policies that I've been integrally involved in developing, analyzing, passing, and overseeing the implementation of.
Great. Thank you. Matt, we'll go to you. So what experience, Tiffany, do you have in public health policy?
Yes, so my first experience in public health policy was my first experience in public policy at all. A few years ago, actually, I worked for Lane County Health and Human Services, and that was my first introduction to Lane County's government. I worked for Jason Davis, who I want to give a kind of a special shout out to right now because he is doing fantastic work, doing all of Lane County's public health briefings surrounding COVID-19 right now. And I think, you know, we all owe him a great debt of gratitude right now. He's a great friend and a great man, and he's doing great things right now, as all of our public workers are doing, just fantastic things throughout Health and Human Services. They do great things every single day. They don't get nearly the recognition that they deserve, and they're doing even better right now. But what I did there a few years back, I think it was four years back, three years back, actually, sorry, when I was at Health and Human Services, I worked on the local implementation of the Community Health Improvement Plan, which is kind of a local offshoot of the Affordable Care Act. When it was passed, there were small benefits set aside for every county to implement its own preventative health measures. And for us, it was the Community Health Improvement Plan. And I was in charge of putting together a marketing plan for it and getting it implemented here in Lane County. And I learned so much from that experience. I was given a lot of autonomy and a lot of room to work, and I saw how collaborative the public health environment was and just how important preventative services were. And, you know, only 3% of our money right now is, our healthcare money is spent on preventative services, and that's a number that needs to dramatically increase because it is far less expensive for us to treat diseases before they happen, to fund money, fund these preventative services and make sure that we're prepared to deal with things before they happen and before they turn into outbreaks, before they turn into pandemics. We need to start funding these services earlier and start treating problems before they happen, before they spiral, before they become out of control like we're seeing right now. And these are all things that I've learned through this experience, and it was one of, you know, the best experiences of my life, one of the most eye-opening policy experiences that I've ever had still to this day. And I'm very thankful for that experience that I've had. So it was, it was very fortunate and a great work experience for me as well. And I got to meet a lot of fantastic public employees and see that we have these great public employees throughout Lane County and especially in our public health department.
Great, thanks, Matt. Well, I'll go to another question here, and we'll start with Joel. Joel, um, how would you factor in the considerations of small business when making policy decisions? Hold on here, there you go.
So I'm a, right, like all of us here on this call frequently visit local businesses. And the great thing about Eugene, the great thing about Lane County, really, the, I would say the wonderful thing about Oregonians is that we're friendly people. I was in the Washington DC last year for, for this, this lobbying meeting, and I quickly realized I was not on the West Coast anymore, and I was not in Oregon anymore. So the fact that we are such friendly people, I think people in Eugene, people in Lane County develop these long-term relationships with the people, with the businesses they frequent. And that's something I certainly would like to continue as county commissioners, forming close relationships, you know, with our local business owners, listening to the concerns that they have, things they'd like to see. And one of the ways I've done that already, right, it was last summer, there was a string of, of hay graffiti on our local businesses, specifically in the Whittaker community in downtown, there was a string of, of swastika sort of sprayed across the community. And, and I had already been in, trying to champion and introduce this, this resolution to condemn white nationalism or white supremacy. And I was able to work with a couple of local business owners and hear about their concerns, hear about how afraid they were. And, and really, you know, to me, our local businesses is what, as, are they're the backbone of our local economy, you know? And I've interacted with local businesses in my role as a human rights commissioner, in my role as coalition manager for immigrant rights, as a police commissioner as well, working really closely with, with Chief Skinner, with some other business owners, especially in the downtown area. You know, really, we all have to live here together, and our local businesses make Eugene and Lane County the unique place and the beautiful place it is to live. And so as county commissioner, my number one priority, in addition to ensuring that we're all okay, is, is also giving space to local business owners to go pick the phone, call me, hey, Joel, I have something that's on my mind, I really want to talk to you about it. And, and, you know, for me to be as responsive as possible, not only to listen out to these concerns, but also to provide spaces, you know, like I said, I'm a coalition builder. So one of the first things I would love to do is put out a call and say, you know, can folks meet me at this location and can we have a conversation about what some of your concerns are? You likes, which, what, what are the things you like that you're seeing? What are some of the things that you're, you know, we're kind of scratching your head saying, let's try and figure this out?
Great. Thanks, Joel. We'll go to Sandra next. Sandra, how do you factor considerations of small business in making policy decisions?
Yes, I think that, I think that it's, it's critically important that we understand that the, and, and we can see that clearly with all the shutdowns from the COVID-19, 19 crisis here, we can see how important the small businesses are. And my definition of small business is not that of the federal. Small business to me is not up to 500 employees. Small business to me has, you have to remember and include those small businesses that may have five, six, seven employees. They are not covered by any of our fancy plans for, you know, paid time off, paid leave, they get no health benefits, nothing. Those really small businesses have to be brought into the mix as well. And I think how you do it, those businesses, businesses that are small to medium, you ask them directly what they want, and you provide a way for them to be heard. And it's not setting up endless task forces or, or committees, but it's allowing them to have someone, you and staff that they can go directly to, to get their concerns put on the table and can know how, what resources are there. One of the things that I think is, is being underutilized at the county these days is the auditing, the performance auditing office is underutilized. It needs to really be ramped up, and that will help us to see what sort of services or help is available when we're trying to do anything to help small businesses. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Sandra. Lori, we'll go to you next. Lori, um, how do you factor considerations of small business when making policy decisions?
Sure. Well, small businesses, again, small is a relative number, and business is a relative term. There's many, many different kinds of businesses and different industries and sectors, and they have very different needs, right? The food and restaurant and beverage industry is a very different sector than the wood products industry, for example, with really different issues around supply chain and workforce development and the product that they're offering. One of the things that I would do always in all of my decision-making is begin with the end in mind. What are we trying to accomplish? And then how do we work our way back? What are the steps to help us get there? I would bring my own experience as someone who has run a nonprofit organization as an executive director. I know that it's different, but there are many, many similarities. I was also responsible for developing essentially a business plan, for finding the resources to fund, to fund that plan, to develop a good product that the community wanted, which was the mission, and, and get support. I was responsible for hiring, training, and in some difficult cases, firing employees. I always paid living wages and provided healthcare or some kind of subsidy for that. So I would bring my own experience of, of running a small nonprofit, which really is running a business, to my decision-making when it comes to supporting the business community. And again, the recognition that business is not one thing. And so in, in that recognition lies the answer to how would I incorporate the needs of business and decision-making? The answer is, it depends, depends on the decision, depends on the business, the industry, the sector, and the scope of, of the decision that's being made.
Okay, thanks, Lori. Matt, I'll go to you next. How do you factor considerations of small business in making policy decisions?
Great, yeah. First off, I just want to address what Joel said. Having spent four years going to college in Philadelphia, I can confirm that Oregonians are a lot more polite than East Coasters, that's for sure. And, you know, Lori said in the last question that everything that we do, every public policy decision is a public health policy, and that's true. Also, every policy decision that we make is an economic policy. That's true as well. And, you know, my family spent many years bouncing around from house to house. If we're going to be able to stay at our house for, you know, the next month. And, you know, I understand everyone needs a living wage job. Everyone needs to know that, you know, they're secure in their housing, they're secure in their income. And the people who provide that living wage job are those local businesses, are those small businesses. We need to make sure that we support them. How am I going to make sure that they're included? I'm not going to wait for them to call me. I'm not going to say like, I'm just accessible. I'm going to actively reach out to them. Tiffany, it's great that you're here because I'm probably going to be actively reaching out to you specifically a lot. And it's great that people can see your face and know you're the person who I'm going to be reaching out to and I'm going to be talking to a lot because our economy is linked to everything, whether it be homelessness, whether it be public health, whether it be climate change, whatever it might be, our economy is linked to that. We need to make sure that we have an economy that thrives. And the way to do that, the way to do that equitably, the way to do that sustainably, is to invest in the small businesses that come up through our community, that actually care about our community, that want to give back, that want to be a part of Lane County, that want to be a part of Eugene. So we need to make sure that we do everything possible for them to succeed. So I'm going to actively seek out the opinions of these small businesses and make sure that they have input on our decisions and their opinions are taken into account. That doesn't mean I'm just going to roll over the business community, but it means that I'm going to make sure that their opinions are taken into account in every decision that we make. They're a very important constituent of us here in Eugene, in Lane County. We need to make sure that we're hearing what they have to say in every decision that we make. They need to make, we need to make sure that we're soliciting their opinion. It's incredibly important. So Tiffany, that's my promise to you. I'm going to be picking up the phone a lot and calling you, not just waiting on your call, to make sure that, you know, you're in constant communication, whether it be with the chamber, whether it be with individual business owners, to make sure that their her, their employers, they provide the jobs that people need. And that's what I want to do as county commissioner.
Great. So thank you all. Here's what I'm going to do with just four minutes left. I'm going to go ahead and do a, just a last round through and give each of you the opportunity to just give some closing remarks. And I'll give you each about two minutes or maybe, well, let's call, let's say 90 seconds, right? And I'll have you each go ahead and make some closing statements, just anything you are asking the voters to consider in, out in District Three, and I'll kind of let you own whatever you'd like to say. We'll start with Sandra. Go ahead. Oh, wait, let me unmute you. I apologize. There you go. You're on.
Thank you, Tiffany. Thanks. 90 seconds. I'd say that I think we need to stop pretending that it doesn't take experience to serve on the Board of Commissioners in Lane County. I have the experience. I am the only candidate that really has directly applicable experience being on an elected board, serving on EWEB for 10 years and actually having to come up with the policy and implement it. And I've got a track record for these larger projects. I think it is not easy to always see how many years it takes to do something like move industrial operations that have been there for 100 years off the riverbank property to open it up for a future mixed-use development. So I'm proud of things like that, that after 100 years of industrial use, we have green grass growing on the riverbank and we have public access again to that land. I am experienced and skilled in dealing with large budgets. The EWEB budget could fluctuate, it's a very large budget, hundreds of millions of dollars, and it could fluctuate by anywhere between 30 and 40 million in a quarter. So whoever goes onto the board really needs that kind of real-world experience with budgeting. And I've helped to develop several of the business sectors in this area. I was instrumental in, in working in the, in the natural health foods industry, the beverage industry. So, you know, I've, I've got that, that kind of experience. And I think moreover, I just have the experience of having grown up here and seen the kind of changes that our community has gone through. And I have learned and very, very much taken to heart, you can't make assumptions about what people need without going to them directly and asking, what is it that the county government can do for you and how can we be of service? Thank you.
Great, thanks, Sandra. Lori, I'll go to you next. Lori, give us a couple of 90 seconds or so closing statement.
Yeah, great. Well, I just, I want to thank you again so much to the chamber for giving us all this opportunity and, and also for mucking through the technological challenges. And we're all doing our best to work from home, and we all have kids making noise in the background and cats who can't wait to get on camera. So there, there's your big shot at fame, buddy. I just will close by saying that I'm very excited about this opportunity. It's something that's been on my radar for a long time. I want to bring my real lived experience, my professional career, my community volunteer service on the Lane County Budget Committee as an Egan Warming Center volunteer, as an advocate for Planned Parenthood Advocates of Oregon and NARAL Pro Choice. I want to bring all that experience on issues that matter to the community, to the role of a county commissioner, and oversee the vital human services that are provided by the county. I want to serve my district in this way. I want to secure a healthy future for my grandsons. They deserve it. Everyone's children and, and grandchildren do. I'm absolutely motivated by the work I've done to improve community, make things more equitable and more just, and deliver those same values and services in, in the role of a county commissioner. My website, lauritrigger.com lists the dozens of organizations that are standing with me, the 34 elected officials locally up and down the ballot, and the more than 100 community leaders who are standing with me, who trust and believe that I have the experience, the temperament, the skill to be an effective county commissioner for District Three. So thank you so much again for your time this evening, very much appreciate it. And thank you to my fellow candidates for participating tonight.
Great, thank you, Lori. That's great. Joel, we'll go to you for closing remarks.
Sure.
Off the floor, go for it.
So first of all, I hope you're all staying sane in your houses. I know it's been almost a month and going a little stir fry, but very glad to be able to, to share the stage with my fellow candidates via Zoom. And of course, thank you, Tiffany, and the Chamber of Commerce for your, for all your work and making sure that candidates are able to participate in democratic process and for the, the residents of Lane County and of Eugene to participate in this process. You know, I just want to reiterate, you know, as myself, as a, as a born and raised Eugenian and as a homegrown coalition builder, you know, I have been endorsed by Democratic Party of Lane County. And really, I'm, I'm fighting to ensure a future with, with affordable, healthy homes, with safe streets for everyone in our community, and then also for a regenerative, green economy with living wage jobs, for everyone who calls Lane County their home. You know, I'm, I'm really excited and I have been sort of building up to, to, to run for this position. I like to tell folks that I, I've been voluntold to do a lot of things, right? I'm volunteered by other folks, whether it be, you know, when I applied to the Human Rights Commission and of course, of course became chair, you know, fighting for civil rights to, you know, being handpicked and appointed by Governor Kate Brown when I was 25 years old to serve on her Environmental Justice Task Force, improving the decisions that affect the environment and the health of our Oregonians. Please visit iboa4southeugene.com, that's I-B-O-A, number four, southeugene.com, that lists, you know, the, the dozens of endorsements that I've received from lots of elected officials to organizations. And also, I'm very excited to, to let folks know that, you know, as of last Wednesday, I received the sole endorsement of the registered guard for county commissioner. So thank you all for your time, and the primaries are, are less, are almost a month away. So I'm very excited.
Great. Thanks, Joel. Matt, we'll let you go ahead and take us home there. Give us a couple of minutes here to just closing remarks. Go for it.
Awesome, sounds great. So thank you very much, Tiffany. Awesome. Sounds great. So thank you very much, Tiffany, and to the whole Chamber of Commerce for letting us do this and for finding a way to make this work via Zoom, which is, I know, difficult, but thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And, you know, I'm very proud to be on the stage with three other great candidates. And I'm really looking forward to, you know, the primary to May 19th. I think we're all looking forward to it. And I hope everyone's staying safe and staying healthy right now. And, you know, I'm proud to be endorsed by a wide group, including everyone from, you know, Senator Arnie Roblin out in Florence to Democratic, the young Democrats of University of Oregon. And, but, you know, don't vote for me because of my endorsements. Vote for me because we got to stop pretending that the old way of doing things is working and it's not. And there are a lot of issues that we didn't get to talk about today. Whether it be affordable housing, whether it be climate change, there are a lot of things we didn't get to talk about, but in each and every one of them, you can see that the old way of doing anymore. And we need people who are going to come in with new and innovative ideas and take some real action and fight for some real progress. You know, I got the opportunity to tour the county jail a couple of months ago, and it's still the most transformative process that I've had throughout this campaign. I met a nurse there, her name was Stephanie. And she told me this story about a man that she had seen come in and out of the jail for years. And every time she saw him, he looked worse and worse. And she was convinced that he would be dead at one point. And she didn't see him for about seven months. And one time he came up to her on the street. He was like, Steph, Steph, don't you recognize me? Don't you recognize me? And she was like, no, no, who are you? He's like, it's me. Like, I've been clean and sober for seven months. She didn't recognize him because he looked so good. And she broke down in tears telling me this story. And, you know, then I realized how fantastic our public employees were and how much they care about the people that they interact with. And we need to empower them. We need to empower them with real ideas and real progress and bold leadership. And that's exactly what I plan to do as county commissioner. And that's why I'm asking for your vote. So please go to mattmore2020.com to learn more about me and my ideas for Lane County.
Great. Well, I want to just, in closing, I would really love to thank all of you for participating and for joining me tonight. It's a beautiful night outside. And so I cannot thank you enough for spending it with me. Thank you so much for all of your patience with our technology. This has been a challenging time. I know, like, all you, I imagine your campaigns are turned upside down with having to figure out how to do what we all knew to be the norm. And we're all kind of changing the way we do things. So again, I just want to really thank you. I want to let everybody watching and then those obviously who are going to be watching this later know Eugene Chamber are, is really committed to making sure to be a resource to all of the voters out there who want to hear from the candidates. So I encourage everybody to reach out to you. You've all mentioned your websites. Thank you. That was very helpful. And if there's anything else we can do on our end to help just provide some information, please let us know. With that, I'll go ahead and I'll stop ending our.